Welcome out to City Council in order to start our meeting to pray if you're able. I ask you to stand and ask council members to come by.
If you join me in prayer. Dear God, we thank you for this city that we call home. We thank you for the freedoms that are ours and for the opportunities presented to each of us. We give thanks for so many in our city who selfless and sacrificial effort each day work to make the lives of others better. Their example is a reminder for us all. And finally, we pray for your presence in our minds and hearts at this meeting. Give us the wisdom and courage to do the work for us. This is my prayer. Amen.
As City Council member.
Councilor Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Jordan. Martins. Rogers.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And now.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan got tied up in Raleigh. He's on his way. I'm not sure about Ms. Watkins, but hopefully she'll be here shortly. We have a number. If you came in, there's an agenda over in the box. Hopefully, we have it up on the night clock. Hopefully, you can share. We are on item number four now. Proof of our minutes of the regular scheduled meeting at the City Council, which was held on April eighth, two thousand nineteen. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, then they'll stand as submitted to you. At this time, we have a number of presentations and recognitions. The first person that I would recognize is Roy Jones, who's the CEO of Electric Cities. This is a presentation of the two thousand eighteen North Carolina Public Power Awards of Excellence and American Public Power Mutual Aid Commendations to the City of Rocky Mount Energy Resource Department. Are you here? There you go. I didn't see you. Again, if you're going to speak at our public conditions, my part of the meeting, if you raise your hand, an officer will bring you one of these forms to fill out. Roy, thank you, Ms. Claire, for being here.
Rich, you, Kim, Beryl, I want to come up here and join me. This is the awards to the city. That's one way to meet. You know, first of all, Rocky Mount's one of over two thousand two hundred communities across the United States that own and operate their own electric distribution system. And each year, we try to step back and look at a lot of the innovative things that are going on in the public power communities in North Carolina and look at those communities that are providing outstanding customer service and also, you know, that whole operational excellence, how we group into the Fisher group. And I'm pleased to say that this year, we're going to be recognizing Rocky Mount and recognizing them and some of the best practices and sharing that with the other public power communities across North Carolina and four areas. Let me tell you just a little bit about each of those areas and what Rocky Mount has done to be recognized in these areas. The first one is, you know, a lot of values created by owning and operating your own electric distribution system. And so, the first category is the value of public power. And, you know, last year was a pretty, pretty rough hurricane season, Hurricane Florence and then Michael, winter storm Diego. I think the Weather Channel has to name them all now, y'all have a name. But, you know, in order to prepare for the hurricane, a lot of communication, social media that you all use to communicate with your customers in advance of the storm. And then, as outages and things were occurring and expectations about when the lines were going to be able to be re-energized, a lot of videos and things, you know, about things to do to prepare for the storm. So, all those communication things that you all did in advance of the storm and helping people prepare for the storm and be ready in the event of a power being blown off. But then, you know, once the storm passed, you know, then it's out giving out and assessing the damage and getting power to the store as quickly as possible. And I will say that, you know, Rocky Mount and several of the other cities, communities in Eastern North Carolina, especially Florence, took a different track than what we were expecting and kind of turned it into a rain event. But there were a tremendous number of other public power communities in North Carolina that were impacted. And, you know, and as always, Rocky Mount stepped up and helped the neighboring public power communities and storing their power. Now, in a minute, I'm going to even present you with some national awards from APPA. But also, you know, as you think about, you know, communicating with some of your key customers, you know, a lot of businesses and a lot of their critical processes in advance of the storm and making sure that they safely shut their systems down in anticipation of the storm. So, those kind of communications with your key accounts is also being recognized here with the data and power. So, you know, communicating to the customers in advance of the storm, during the storm and after the storm is clearly a message we're going to be taking to our other public power communities as a model for how to communicate with your customers about what's going on. The next category is continuous improvement. And I tell you, you know, this day and time, technology is changing so fast and it changes the way we do our work. And so, you can't become complacent. You've got to continuously stay abreast of technology and making sure that you're, you know, changing your processes and procedures and taking advantage of that technology. And y'all have done several of these technology deployments here this year. First of all, probably most citizens, if you drive around at nighttime, you notice the LED lights that have been changed out in the community so you get a brighter light. But you also get an efficiency from that light. It uses less energy, so you save on, you know, the wholesale power bill by that power from, from Eastern Agency and from Duke. I think y'all have replaced about fifteen thousand lights here in the city and almost ninety-nine percent complete with that project. So, it's going to save you, you know, a tremendous amount of money in your, in your power costs for your street funds. One of the other things also that was done was taking advantage of fiber optics, you know, within the city and being able to take advantage of that new, you know, fiber optics and change out your SCADA system. And I know as you change out your SCADA system, get information on breakers, opening, closing, you know, loads better, so we're able to get more information in real time and restore power to the customers quicker with the using of the fiber technology and the operating of the SCADA system. And then, I think the last thing is, and Rich, I got it, I bet there's not many people here knows what an electromechanical relay is. But it's one of those things that spins around as opposed to having a digital readout. It, and I didn't know there was any more mechanical relays still in service. So, you need to keep one. Y'all have been replacing those. I think probably on the last of changing out your electromechanical relay and putting in digital solid-state relays. And so, you might want to keep one of those as a souvenir. Probably be in a museum someday. And then, one of the other things, talking about, you know, customers and some of the things with customers, you know, we've got our North Carolina Senate Bill three, the Global Energy Compliance Program that you can comply with. But you all have gone above and beyond that. You have the policy that allows customers to put residential roof pop solar on their homes. So, those customers can choose from going to build above and beyond and have a cleaner portfolio. They can, they can opt in and use your policy. Any excess energy that their shoulder panels produce, y'all will take that energy and use it to serve other customers. So, adopting that, that energy policy for those customers to do more for the power and safety calls, you guys adopt the policy to be responsive to your customers and what they're, some of those customers want to do. The next area is an area that I know we've had a lot of conversations about in the past, and it's workforce. You know, we think about workforce planning and development. We've got a lot of folks that are going to be retiring in the next three, five, seven, ten years. And being able to make sure that we've got that next generation of workers ready to go out and do their work and, you know, safely restore power, safely bring power to the new homes and the communities. And then, be, be trained, be specialized, you know, just basic skill sets and given performance appraisals and things like that. So, it's really good. So, you know, you all are partnering with Nash Community College. And I know I drove by coming in and I always look off my eye every time I drive in and look at the lockup of the stub station that's sitting there with the transformer, all the poles and every bit of that is a partnership with Nash Community College and you all to train not only the alignment here in Rocky Mount, but all over North Carolina, coming to the Nash Community College for training, young graduates right out of high school. Y'all there to get their apprenticeship and training. So, y'all's partnership with Nash Community College and that program in Golden and Cary are all of North Carolina's community partners. In fact, you know, I think that we've got now four other community colleges across North Carolina that are putting out a line of development programs, but every one of them are being modeled off the Nash Community College Climate Development Curriculum program here. And you all are vital part of that partnership with the community college. Couple of other topics here, you know, workforce. You know, one of the most important things we do is making sure that everyone goes home and stuff it to their families every night. And that doesn't just happen. You know, we truly love, take that culture of safety and an emphasis on safety. I literally was just in a meeting before I came here, an hour and a half discussion on the safety, safety program of Electric Cities and how to make that program better and how we deliver that program to our neighborhood communities across North Carolina. So, that whole culture of safety, then it starts from the top. It starts from the UDOT, from the UDOT, this is right here at City Council, and it permeates all the way down to every individual employee and making sure that they go home safely to their families every night. That's, that's job and we don't, I have said this many times, it doesn't matter to me if it takes an extra hour, four hours or an extra day to do what it needs to be done. What matters is that everybody goes home to their family. That's what's important. That's, that is job and we don't. The last category is wholesale power cost. And I know that we've all been enjoying the benefits of the Eastern Agency asset sale and the cost reduction. But I tell you what, there's so many opportunities within that power supply contract to reduce some of the costs. You all are taking advantage of that power supply contract. A big component of that is your load management program, being able to build up hot water tanks, air conditioner, resistors, and strips. And I think here in Rocky Mount, y'all got all those eight thousand eight hundred customers that are taking advantage of that load management program and then reducing their demand during that monthly peak demand. That saves the customers money at the end of the day, their power bills go down. The commercial customers also benefit from that because they're able to put in generators and pick those peaks and enjoy the benefits of that distributed generation and saving those demand charges as well. And then, lastly, you all step up as a community. You've got your energy share program where you go in and, you know, families can help hands. So, if someone's having a hard time paying the power bill, if someone needs some assistance to put in, you know, insulation, things you have to onboard, energy efficient, y'all got a program designed here so that the community collectively can come together and help those homes to come aboard, energy efficient. Help homes, you know, help homeowners pay their power bills, you know, those hot peak demand, you know, when it's cold in January or in the summertime. So, it's coming together, community, and all that starts with your energy share program that you all are promoting. I just want to say congratulations and how much we do appreciate everything going on here in Rocky Mount. As I said, it gives us an opportunity to take the examples that you all are doing here and share with that practices what other public power communities are passing with Carolina. So, congratulations to the entire electric authority, customer service, Congress, everyone for keeping all of us together and fantastic job you all did. Thanks very much.
All right. I think you're still up.
Yes, sir. I just want to, let me go to the mic for a second. So, as I said earlier, with, you know, that very active hurricane season we had last year, I want to tell you what, y'all, y'all really stepped up and helped a lot of our public power communities. And I want to say that in the region, because last year, y'all not only helped go into communities that were struggling to get their power back owned in North Carolina, but you also assisted some of the public power communities out in Virginia. And, and when a storm occurs of the magnitude that we had with Hurricane Florence and Michael last year, about a week in advance of the storm, the American Public Power Association actually starts mobilizing and starts identifying crews that are available all over the United States that can travel and come provide assistance and help restore power to the communities quickly. And so, you know, last year with Florence, you know, a lot of, a lot of the phone calls and preparation work started. And then, here in North Carolina, we started mobilizing on Monday before the storm actually, I guess hung off the building, I think it was on Thursday afternoon with Hurricane Florence. So, we actually started mobilizing on Monday. We sent out communications on Friday to pull the weekend. And then, Monday, we started mobilizing and getting a sense of crews and availability. And, and it never fails, you all, Rocky Mount, step up to the plate time and time again and provide resources. Now, clearly, if the storm, you know, hits, we're going to take care of getting the power restored at home first, but then, once the power's restored at home, then you all step up and make the crews better, go try out to other communities to help them. And last year, you know, y'all stepped up and went to four different communities. And that was recognized nationally because, as you know, four day, national crews, really in and out, and the needs that we have for assistance first and foremost, we place our in-state crews in our communities first and then we augment that with our state crews. And so, last year, y'all stepping up and going to four different public power communities. The American Public Power Association recognized that. And so, I've got commendations here from the American Public Power Association and actually wanting to present these two crew leaders that would actually travel with their crews to these communities and help restore power. So, we've got the four communities that were providing assistance. It was Laurinburg, Newburg, and we all saw on the news last year, Florence, Hobbix, Newburg was flooding and issues. And then, in Virginia, as I said earlier, Martinsville and Danville were two other communities that you all needed help. Now, so what I would like for, you know, Casey Temple, Benji Turner, Steve McBride and Jerry Hawkins, if you guys would step forward. So, Casey went to Laurinburg and had my assistance in Laurinburg last year with Hurricane Florence and a lot of the flooding that took place. Benji Turner, this was a crew, they went to Newport and began providing respirations, assistance in Newport. And, and I think we all, as I said earlier, you saw on the Weather Channel and all of the flooding, you know, the things that went home. I think that, I think there was homes that were built in the seventeen hundreds in Newport that never flooded before. With Hurricane, storm surge, those homes actually flooded. So, it was some tremendous, you know, the conditions down there that were working with were just, were just unbelievable. And Martinsville, Steve McBride and his crew went up there to help them. And then, Jerry Hawkins and his crew went to Danville. Now, I think they actually got to go up there twice because if you all recall, we had Hurricane Florence and then, once it finally began moving, you know, they had issues and outages up there and they went with the Florence. But then, also, we had Hurricane Michael coming through. It just, it just pounded and handled the North Carolina Florida. And I think they're still recovering from it. But when it came across North Carolina, it kind of entered the state in the southwest corner and it exited the northeast corner of the state. And when it did, it went all up into Danville and Martinsville. I think last year, both Hurricane Florence and Michael, they both, both communities got hit twice. And I think y'all sent crews up there and these guys went up and provided assistance here in both areas. So, from the American Public Power Association, all of you guys, congratulations in your crews. I got to say this because I do recognize a few faces here. Last year, if you all recall, we also hosted the American Public Power Association Line Worker Rodeo. And, and y'all also sent crews over there to help us put up about a hundred and fifty poles to host that national rodeo. So, I recognize some faces. We was out there working in the mud, trying to get that rodeo around built. So, it's good to see you guys again as well.
Mayor, if I could, we have our whole department here and I think it's appropriate to not only recognize the supervisors, but the crews and the entire department, especially when you think about the horrific thunderstorms we've been dealing with and the confirmed tornado that came this last weekend. These, these gentlemen were out there dealing with that. So, would y'all please stand and be recognized? I'd like to thank you, Rich, and your department for what you do. And we might have sent mutual aid to other communities this time, but in the past, you and I, member of a public power, we had other communities send people here when we had needs. So, it's nice that we can help other communities when we have the opportunity to do that. At this time, we have a presentation, proclamation proclaiming May twelfth through eighteenth, two thousand nineteen as Police Week and May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen as Peace Officers Memorial Day to Police Chief George Robinson. I'll call you up in just a second when I get ready. Just want to read part of this. We've got a number of presentations. So, it says, "Proclamation of the City of Rocky Mount, whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of Rocky Mount, Nash and Edgewood County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of citizens of our community. These officers, past and present, have by their faith and loyal devotion to their responsibilities rendered dedicated service to our community. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties and responsibilities of law enforcement agencies, it's equally important that members of those agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by preserving life and property, by protecting citizens from violence or disorder, and by safeguarding the innocent against deception and the weak, against oppression or intimidation. These law enforcement professionals enjoy a long extended record of service to the City of Rocky Mount, Nash and Edgewood Counties, and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens." So, at this time, we also want to, whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day is held annually in the United States on May fifteenth in honor of federal, state and local officers killed or disabled in the line of duty and observed in conjunction with police work. Whereas the City of Rocky Mount remembers and continues to honor two such heroes, Police Officer Allen Christopher Silver, who lost his life in the line of duty on May second, two thousand seven, and Senior Police Officer Christopher Driver, who lost his life in the line of duty on June twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. I therefore, Mayor of Rocky Mount, David Combs, would hereby proclaim May twelfth through May eighteenth as Police Officers Week and May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen as Police Officers Memorial Day in the City of Rocky Mount. Chief Robinson, will you come down and like to present this to you? He's not, is there someone from the police force that would come forward and accept this? Are you the only one? Our next proclamation is for the week of April twenty-second through twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen as Community Development Week in the City of Rocky Mount. I don't believe our Director of Community and Business Development is here, so I'd ask one of the Assistant City Managers to come forth to receive this. And this just says, "Whereas the week of April twenty-second through twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Block Program and the Home Investment Partnership Home Program." And so, at this time, I'd like to ask one of our Assistant City Managers to come forward and let me present this to you. Rather than sitting back down and being like that. We have one more presentation. This is proclaiming the month of May two thousand nineteen as Preservation Month in the City of Rocky Mount. We're going to vote, present this to the Development Services Director, Will Beaton, and members of the Historic Preservation Commission that are here. So, Will, if you'll come forward and any members of our Historic Preservation Numbers, if you're here, we'd love for you to come forward. Again, this just says, "Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods and fostering local pride, maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas two thousand nineteen marks the fifty-third anniversary of the signing of the National Preservation Act, which established the legal framework and incentives to preserve the nation's heritage." So, at this time, I'd like to present this to Will and again, on Preservation Month. This time, we're going to live on. This time, uh, we're gonna, we're going to item number six, which is petitions to be received from the public. As I called it out in the name, if you come down to the front, uh, again, this is a part of our meeting. If you'd like to address the council, uh, hopefully if you didn't get one of these, I want to bring you one, uh, for them to sign up. Any comments should be directed, uh, to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but they refer a matter to the city manager's staff for follow-up. We asked that you speak from the podium, uh, and, um, we'll give you three minutes, and in about two and a half minutes, we'll give you a heads-up so you can finish up your remarks. At this time, I'd like to call, uh, Lewis Nettles, uh, 18375 Ventura Boulevard, and I believe it's Tarzana, California.
Greetings, Councilman. My name's Lewis Nettles. I'm here today, I actually was here back in November, November the 28th, and I spoke with the press about an issue that I had at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. I put together a, uh, reunion for all nine high schools in the area. Uh, the event turned out actually very good, uh, with great participation. However, I let you know at that point that I had some grave issues about some things that happened there. Um, uh, Mayor Combs, you directed, uh, the Assistant City Manager and the Metro City Manager, and they talked to me about it and deal with it, and here we are five months later and nothing has been done, uh, to rectify the situation. So, uh, I did not express myself at that point because honestly, I was not here to try to embarrass anybody, but the things that have happened needfully spoken because they've not been dealt with. So, um, there were many contract defaults that happened to us, and I won't, I don't have three minutes, so I'm gonna go directly to them and give you lie-by-lie. Number one, uh, the power went out three times on us. I have an actual live video that is in real-time, so there is indisputable, irrefutable proof that that has happened, and, uh, that has been available to them. Uh, the power went out, the, there was no, uh, electrician on duty, nor was there an electrician on call. However, I had three trained electricians who were bonded to, that wanted to go fix the problem. They were not allowed to fix the problem because of the catering management. Uh, my guests were asked to leave at 11:48, when my, I had paid for the event until 1:00 a.m., uh, for no reason. Um, I was told by the VP at that time, John McDonald, uh, and this, uh, Natasha Hampton was in the meeting, that the young lady who was over the, our event was no longer, um, attached to the event, and that we would now have the Assistant Manager take over the event. I was okay with that, he was a nice young man. Well, the night of the event, this lady came in and took over the event from that young man, and basically attempted to run my event into league rap, okay? Uh, when I arrived, the people from the kitchen told me that I had food for 850 people available per hour meeting that, uh, she attended. I let them double the price that I was gonna pay out per, per person, so that we didn't have any issues with the food. The lady told me they had 850 people food, uh, yeah, 850 people in the back.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay, that was not brought out, my people was out there with two chicken wings. They sold me a building that was supposed to hold 3,000 people, there's only 90 tables in the whole building itself, and they only had 60 tablecloths, so they, I didn't even have the ability to bring in extra people. I need to have this addressed.
Thank you, Sam. Samuel Battle?
Follow, follow.
Yes.
Do we have any follow-through?
Uh, do we have any follow-through here, or comments I'd like to make now or later?
I was more asking about the rest of you.
Samuel, just give us one second, and then after Samuel, we'll have Frances Constance and A.B. Witten.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, I'm your Pro-Tend Members of Council, Natasha Shinghampton, Assistant City Manager. With regard to resolution, any events that happened in the Event Center was handled by the General Manager, um, and S.F.M., who is the contracted, um, manager to handle events within the Event Center. As for staff resolution, staff attempted to, um, uh, provide reimbursement back to, uh, Mr. Nettles after recognizing that there were, um, certainly good-faith efforts made to, um, host an event and to procure potential services for, or potential events for following years. Um, the city entered into good-faith efforts to reimburse Mr. Nettles for expenses, um, procured. Um, those, those, um, meetings started in November of last year. Um, Mr. Nettles submitted an expense report at that time, the expense report was about $20,000 in expenses. Um, staff went into, um, settlement, um, meetings, staff offered a settlement, uh, at least recommended it to S.F.M. S.F.M. stated to the city that their intent was to reimburse Luke Visions, um, for the recommended settlement amount. Um, that was back in December of 2018, that was, Mr. Nettles was informed of that resolution and did not hear anything else until March 9th of this year. Uh, Mr. Nettles, um, resubmitted an expense report, um, the first expense report again was at 20,000, the second expense report submitted was 24,166, and staff contacted Mr. Nettles after learning of the additional grievances in an attempt to again resolve. Um, on March 14th, staff contacted Mr. Nettles with an intent to reimburse dollar for dollar. Um, Mr. Nettles was advised that the city would reimburse dollar for dollar pending proof of payment for all expenses reported. Mr. Nettles then provided proof of payment totaling 15,397.61 via email. Mr. Nettles was contacted on March 21st and advised of unreconciled totals, and that again, if, um, to reimburse dollar for dollar, those expenses would have to be provided and shown by proof of payment. Staff contacted Mr. Nettles again on the 22nd and again on the 25th, and to date have not heard back from Mr. Nettles again in an attempt to reimburse dollar for dollar all expenses pending proof of payment.
Okay, so, uh, the question, thank you for that, I wasn't expecting that, but, you know, sorry about that. But Mr. Nettles is here, can we please resolve this, since November? Can we please resolve this so that we can move forward? I think it's council, are you all okay, comfortable?
I would like to know who the responsible party was. We are dealing with S.F.M. for management of that soldier line, so is S.F.M.'s responsibility to reimburse any legitimate cost, or is it the City of Rocky Mount?
Yeah, I, I, I can answer that, I think, um, actually it's the responsibility of S.F.M. because, uh, the city contracts with S.F.M. to manage, uh, the Event Center, including all the events there. But I think in good faith, it was our intent to come back to the City Council in the event that the city had to step in and, um, make the reimbursement to come to you for authorization to do that in order to settle the matter. So, uh, what we would like to do in response to, uh, Councilmember Blackwell's request is if, uh, Mrs. Nettles is available after, uh, this meeting, we'll sit down and try to reconcile any receipts that he has that we don't have, so that we can come back with a figure, uh, to reimburse him.
I just want to, uh, apologize, uh, to Mr. Nettles, the classmates, Class 87. And I did attend that event, and I did witness, uh, everything that he just stated, and suggested and urged, uh, our staff, uh, to make sure that you are fully reimbursed. And so this has been lingering on, and I would hope that staff and S.F.M. would resolve this issue. And while we're talking about, uh, events at the Event Center, I also would like to apologize for the, uh, past event that was canceled, uh, on a short notice to the young man that went through the proper procedure and paid the money, uh, that was required of S.F.M. and to get notice that, uh, the event should be canceled because of some citizens that had a problem with the name. I have a strong, strong, uh, bitter taste in my mouth that we let, uh, a few citizens dictate, uh, what is gonna take place at this Event Center. I just want to say to the City Manager that this needs to be resolved. Uh, you have the power, and we have the power to make it right. Uh, this happened last year, it's over six months, and it needs to be, uh, corrected immediately. And I'm sorry you had to take time out of your busy schedule, uh, visiting your family to come to address us. And we are, I'm, I'm ashamed, and I apologize, uh, for how you've been treated. And I also want to say to the young man who had the Grown and Sexy event, which is a typical name, uh, I do apologize for that as well. I think if we have policies, and people follow the proper policy procedure and pay them money, then they should be, they should be treated fairly and just across, justly across the board. And I just want to say that we need to get this, uh, we need to get it straight. We need to have a strong talk with those that manage the Event Center, and if they can't manage it, we need to get rid of them. Thank you.
Samuel? And Frances, uh, Constance, and then, uh, Mr. Witten?
Y'all good now? I got three issues right now. The guys from both sides of the gangs, willing to take amends and talk to Chief Robinson, and they've been calling him, he's not been turning their phone calls back. So they trying to take this issue to Keystone now, but this issue is in Rocky Mount, Keystone had nothing to do with this issue right here. So, somebody need to get in contact with Robinson and tell him to pick up his phone, ask if these guys are willing to make amends, or some of this situation is more of a gang stuff. Um, number two, the issue that I have is these neighborhood residents. Some of these guys, some of these people is not active in the community, some of these people can't get out and move, walk, or whatever, they have no energy to talk to the young people, no energy to relay information back to y'all. Uh, we need to, s- some people in the community want to be neighborhood residents, they need, they need a list. They need to find out when they, when the, uh, election for them, I mean, coming up, so we can get them out of here. Uh, I went out, I've been talking to Archie Jones, you know, on a couple situations, but I need a list, I need to find out when these people come up with elections, so I can let people know in the community, they need to go, get them out of here, what we gotta do to get them out of here. Um, the last thing that, um, I'm very ashamed of in War One, you know, I went over talking to Mr., Mr. Archie Boe, Mrs. Kayla Boe, she was off, always off for many years on that, in that community, Lincoln Park, community, you know. Martin Luther King spoke here in Rocky Mount. I took my granddaughter, my grandkids over there, I don't know that way he stayed at and everything. Me and Mr. Mark Miller went over there a couple of weeks ago, but that, it's a motel right there where he's, I mean, behind that Lincoln Cafe where Martin Luther King stayed, B.B. King stayed there. The roof is coming over, the inside of the building is, is beautiful, it's, it's no wear and tear inside. But we don't take care of this matter right here, the history that Martin Luther King came here, it'll be gone where he first stayed at, no one took, no one...
You got about 30 seconds.
No one is trying to take care of this matter. You know, he came to Rocky Mount, did our dreams, our dreams speech here, and we let this history go, man. We killing this history. We need to take care of this history in Rocky Mount, take care of Buckland's situation, we take care, uh, Theodore's mom, Martin Luther King was here, man, he was here, we need to take care of that roof where he was at, where he stayed at. He went to a couple houses, the Stone House and everything, we need to take care of that issue right now, man. We need to do it fast, man. Like, we got some people that want to donate for a roof or something, let us know, but we need to take, put a roof on that building. That's it.
Thank you. Frances?
I'm Frances Constance, and I live at 7257 Powell Road. I know the council has made their decision about the Tarver Street housing, but I really do think that a man or a woman's word should be their bond, and I do not think that y'all have lived up to your bond. And I also think that there is no place for the children to play. Could be we would have a lawsuit 20 years from now with children from getting cancer from the ground seepage from across the road where the cleaning place has been. And I just would like y'all to rescind it and go back to the park if that is at all possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Maybe quickly, uh, 3401 Merck Road, Rocky Mount. Mayor, I just want to give a update on where we're at on that investigation that's going on, and if we might hear something. And, and again, I think last time you were here, uh, manager's mother had passed away, and then her father passed away, uh, a week or so later, and so she's been out of the office. So, um, we are at the end of it, they finished everything, they are getting ready to, uh, give us a preliminary report. So by our next meeting, we'll have that, we should have that report for you. That will be on the, we'll put it up. Well, after our attorney review. Yeah. Thank you. All right, yes, sir. Anna Lamb, and then, um, Ms. Koo, or Dr. Koo, I'm sorry, and then Bronson after that.
Hi, my name's Anna Lamb, and I live at 7 Car Street. Um, since today is Earth Day, I wanted to ask the City Council what steps it's taken, um, on issues such as climate change and environmental justice. I applaud your endorsement of the Climate Protection Agreement at the Conference of Mayors, but that was almost 12 years ago in 2007. I also thank you for stepping up to make our houses and businesses more energy efficient, but that's not enough to protect us, and time is running out to prevent the irreversible damage of, uh, and the impacts of climate change. I'm petitioning the City Council to come out against the Atlantic Coast Pipeline that is being built here in Nash County and other counties in eastern North Carolina, and instead commit to investing, to investing in renewable energy that will make us less dependent on non-renewables such as natural gas. The project is two years behind schedule and more than $2 billion over budget. Our farmers here in Nash are having their land taken away from them, and not for the public good, but for corporate profit. There's no long-term economic gain for Rocky Mount, and in fact, utility customers will see their bills rise because we are the ones footing the bill of this unnecessary pipeline so that Duke Energy and Dominion can profit. It's no coincidence that the proposed pipeline route runs through counties where the poverty level is far higher than average and where African-American communities constitute 30 to 50% of the population. In fact, the pipeline is more likely to gentrify, gentrify towns than to actually benefit local residents, an issue that is very relevant to this town council and residents of Rocky Mount. Natural gas is not clean, the gas in the ACP would be mostly methane, which is 87 times more harmful to our climate than carbon dioxide over its first 20 years in the atmosphere. It contributes to rising sea levels and stronger natural disasters we are witnessing now in eastern North Carolina. All pipelines leak, the leaks are a danger to our air quality and water supply here in Rocky Mount, and considering the tragic gas explosion that just happened in Durham 12 days ago, this pipeline is also a danger to our lives. Last May, the Rocky Mount Telegram published an editorial coming out against the ACP. We need you to step up.
You have about 30 seconds.
Thanks. We need you to step up and protect us and our environment. And I request that the City Council joins the Telegram and other city councils across West Virginia, Virginia, and North Carolina in opposing the ACP and investing in renewable energy. Thank you.
Dr. Koo? And then, uh, for that, Bronson Williams.
My name is Dr. Koo, and I live in 220, 220 South Englewood Drive in Rocky Mount. My name is Dr. Koo and I live in two-two-zero South Anglewood Drive in Rocky Mount. My petition to city council is that while I'm aware that city council is concerned with all city matters, it is my firm belief that prioritizing needs of the city citizens should be the guiding principle. That thus it would make sense to enable the most needy of the citizens the respect they seek. The question of affordable housing has been on the agenda of many communities on the Edgecombe side of Rocky Mount for some time now. These communities have deteriorated from flight of more wealthy residents, disinvestments over many years, and increasing unemployment. However, even with employment, many folks with two jobs cannot afford adequate housing. Thus, over the years, community organizations here have put affordable housing on top of their list and have encouraged the city to build them with whatever federal funding that trickles down. I'm puzzled about the big ado concerning building parking lots versus building workforce housing. To me, this is a no-brainer. Even if the original idea is to build a parking lot, if the opportunity arrives for building something that is of great, that is really of greater benefit to people, why is it wrong to change one's mind? We do that all the time when we plan our future. Are we then holding council members to a different standard? I want to reiterate my continued support for the workforce housing as contributing towards relieving the housing crisis in this city, and as such, we should all support the plan. Tier parking can be a solution to our parking woes, and I'm astonished why that was not even mentioned. Maybe someone can enlighten me on that subject. Underground and one or two-story parking can vastly expand the lots and should be possible, be a possible solution to this dilemma. The only other point is the mention of some kind of brownfield situation over there. I suggest that before we build that workforce housing, we should really kind of investigate that, take care of it, and ensure that it's a safe place to build the house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
After Bronson, Charles Chalmers Jr. and then Stacy Graham.
What issues aren't addressed by the council? That was my concern with cultural sensitivity as related to the Grown and Sexy party that was supposed to be held this past Friday at the event center. The type of conversation I saw on social media surrounding that party spoke to the need for cultural sensitivities, opportunities to have true dialogue and understand cultural differences. The other piece I want to talk about is, as I was reading the city cable franchise agreement, there is a paragraph in that franchise agreement in which WHIG TV is on the air because they provide the public access studio to the community. It's my understanding that people are not able to use that facility. There are some remedies that, of course, your attorney can look at as to what can be done to rectify access to the public to use that space. There are people who want to express themselves and they shouldn't have any censorship of content that I've been hearing was going on. And certainly that even happened to me when I tried to get access to that facility in two thousand and fourteen. I looked at all emails today. I hope that this council will get back with me in the next ten days or so as to how we can address this issue. Again, it's laid out in the cable franchise agreement, so it's very cut, clear, and clear what can happen. One remedy is that if a broadcast is willing to take on those responsibilities, they can do that as well. I will put on record that I, with my television station, is inclined to do such as well. Lastly, I want to talk about transparency. A lot of the conversation and articles in the Rocky Mount Telegram, in my opinion, is really due to the fact that this body or staff, et cetera, is not truly transparent with the community. I think that we certainly have to get out in front of issues, tell it like it is, the truth never changes. So it's important that we let people know what is going on in our community. But again, there was a story talking about the event center on pay utilities. I guess when people read something, they still make up their own mind about something. I guess no matter how truthfully our people still say certain things, it's simply not true. But certainly, I think we always can do a better job on transparency. But most importantly, please check on this issue as relates to WHIG TV.
Thank you. Mr. Chalmers?
I have a question.
Why?
Mr. Chalmers. The myth.
Change.
Yeah. As far as what Mr. Bronson said, are you prepared to take a look at that in reference to the budget?
I am, sure.
Okay. And another question, the Gateway Technology Center, is that owned by Wesleyan? I know it's on Wesleyan campus, but my understanding that it's owned by different local governments.
I don't know.
Do you?
I don't think so. We can really go search. I think at least the space there.
Do they lease it from Rocky Mount or Wesleyan or?
College.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Charles D. Chalmers Jr. I wanted to talk about economic development and housing, but I do want to make sure that people understand that the issue created unnecessarily by the mayor, new manager or general manager at the event center, and others, including our local media regarding grown and sexy. It is not just the fact that you may or may not like the phrase, because the phrase has been in use for at least the last twenty years more in entertainment areas and for many events around this region, up and down the east coast for that matter. So it's not the matter that some of you might be looking for an issue to create, but if you don't know what something is or what it means, don't make derogatory comments until you make yourself aware of what it is. I think it's an economic development issue because the event center is here and it needs to be successful. Now, obviously, I disagree with those who think that means it should only be marketed for athletic events because I don't believe that's the best approach. But certainly for those of us who try to get promoters and others to bring concerts and related events to this area, to have a week or ten days, quote from the mayor saying, you don't know what it means and what does it mean? And then WHIG people spend half hour talking about what it might mean, and then somebody writes something saying, you know, it must be something derogatory, it must be something negative. For what purpose? At least the last person, the writer, thought to do a Google search, which would have helped everybody along the line. But to start making negative comments without at least knowing what it's about, I think is really a problem. And I relate it to the lack of diversity sensitivity. We don't all party together. We don't all go to the same events. We don't all eat the same foods. But if you hear about something and it's something you're not familiar with, ask somebody. That's a simple approach. In regard to the situation regarding housing, I think it's unfortunate. It sat in on the presentation by UNC's folks about the housing on Tarver. I think it's unfortunate that there are issues about it.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Chalmers.
I'll try to wrap it up. See, because the city is so far behind in dealing with affordable housing, as was indicated in previous presentations. So it's unfortunate that we're in a back and forth about that, and I hope we can get that resolved. On the tree issue, I'm still trying to find out why we can't get some attention in Edgecombe regarding trees that are obviously in the right way, and the city has not followed up. And I'd like to get that done. I don't know, I'd like to finish just for a second.
Time's up.
Okay.
And then, again, we can get with that in the meeting, but we try to restrict people for three minutes.
Nobody's gotten in touch with me in a year, almost a year. And so I'll accept your representation, but we've presented this in writing. You'd have just spoke to all the community presidents and got no response.
Chris Natasha, can one of you get the chances? Okay. With the deadline, can you commit to do that in the next week? Can we do that? Stacy Graham and then Mr. Davis. By the way, before you start, I just questioned what the event was. I was not aware of it. I didn't say it was good or bad. I didn't book the event and I didn't cancel the event, just so you'll know. I had people asking me about it, so I questioned it. So I just want to be clear. Yes, ma'am.
Council members, Stacy Graham, Seventeen Twenty-One Country Club Road. I want to first say congratulations, you did form the Animal Care and Control Advisory Board, but it's currently a false promise. You filled nine, filled three of the nine positions on the board, and therefore we can't do anything. The city and the police department has posted the vacant animal control position. Days of service on this are Monday through Friday. This is a missed opportunity for the city to better serve their community. A simple change to Tuesday through Saturday shift would provide twenty percent more service hours with regard to animal control. This would not cost the city any additional money. So when? When will Rocky Mount move forward? When will Rocky Mount look to the future and actually start making some progress on best practices when it's concerning animals? Thank you.
And we have some vacancies on that board, and I think council members are working on that right now. I think we have four slots.
She's been here every council meeting.
Yeah, and I, so I think three vacancies now, so I think we're working on it. Mr. Davis?
I'm here to speak about, I had wrote down Harris Street, South Harris Street, and I talked to Chris Bessler today in regards, I sent an email to Rochelle's, my Tony, Chris Bessler, and Cameron Privet a couple of weeks ago in regards to some trash on the side of the street, on Harris Street. You know, it's becoming too often, too common that we let our city ride. We let trash sit on the sides of the streets. There's multitude of litter in these streets of Rocky Mount. I was born in Philadelphia, and the streets of Philadelphia when I grew up there was filthy. And the streets of Philadelphia now is clean, and Rocky Mount has taken on the filth. We need to do a better job, and I understand that it's a two-way street, citizens need to do its job, but the city staff needs to step up and stop being lazy. They need to do their job and pick up the trash. Every city employee that's out on these streets need to pick up trash. My friend received a bill from the call that I, that I called in regards to trash on the side of the street, on Harris Street, received a bill for two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. He's not paying it. This city council needs to do something about it, and I'm going to the next door neighbor who had trash on the side of the street when I leave here to make sure that they will receive a bill. And if we're going to pass out double-dipping bills, I'll go to McDonald's and pay for my fries once, after I eat them, and pay for them again. That's not acceptable. You pay taxes once, and you guys need to do something about it. Second of all, get here and we want to bash certain city council members in regards to purchasing property. We have a guy out in the audience, Mr. Robbie Davis, who purchased a hundred and twenty acre tract and said that they were following the proper, the almost normal bidding procedures, almost. I just want to be a part of the almost normal bidding procedures when it happens in Rocky Mount, almost. Maybe I can acquire a hundred and twenty acres and almost develop some nice wealthy houses. That would be great. And also, I just want to speak on the event center. I think that, like Andrew Knight said, if we can't find the management to run this thing, maybe we need to switch our contract. That's it.
Thank you. Nice talking.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The city council, I want to know what the real reason the seven of you have turned your back on original promises made to the public investors, the event center, and Edgecombe Community College to develop Tarver Street parking. And as constituents of Ward One to develop crossings at sixty-four for that matter. In terms of economic development, for the city and in Ward One, the project intended by the governor is ideal in sparking development across since the sixty-four property that was planned for the development over twenty years ago, with the intent to spur development in the sector of the city. In two thousand and twelve, it was reported two point nine million dollars was paid in taxes by federal, state, and local, and then on top of that, Golden Leaf Funds. To my knowledge, only development there is Bojangles in two thousand and twelve. Why is that? Between our current manufacturers of Horni and Triangle Tire, there are thirty-five hundred jobs to be had in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. Crossings at sixty-four is propositioned to benefit from the growth, not only for Ward One but for the entire city. Why are we not doing everything we can to develop? A hotel that has direct access to both the event center and the sports complex or a grocery store or retail stores. Why did the city impose the use of affordable housing tax credits, which imposes unnecessary restrictions for the governor's housing project? Remove the city imposed affordable housing tax credits stipulation, thereby allowing the development to happen at the crossings, spurring further economic development in the area. Land is available, land is available at crossings at sixty-four owned by the Rocky Mount Edgecombe CDC. Based on the Minnesota Housing Report that was in the paper, this needs, Rocky Mount needs to quit popping up the Rocky Mount Edgecombe CDC. This is an opportunity for the CDC to make money off the sale of the land generated by a grocery store development and sales of land for all eighty units, not just a few units on Tarver Street, but all eighty units of workforce housing. Ultimately, this will take Rocky Mount CDC off the goals of the Rocky Mount taxpayers. Allow this property to be tax-producing as promised by federal, state, and local taxpayer dollars were given to this project. In an article dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, nearly seven years ago, officials stated, officials sitting in this room stated that they were related to see the process, progress at crossings. Again, I asked the seven of you, why have you chosen not to keep your promises to the citizens of Rocky Mount to better their future here at crossings at sixty-four?
I just want to say, crossings at sixty-four is in Ward One. How dare you come down here? Let it back to you. I'm talking. Control the group, Mayor.
Well, again, I think, you know, citizens have a right to question us, and I think that's what Mr. Dolph stated right there.
And my response is, that is my word. And we have been trying to get development in crossings at sixty-four for the last. Well, I think, council member Bush, get your audit desk out of control, Mayor. I think you need to.
I think what happens is, we ask citizens to come up here, limit their remarks, do not be derogatory, and not be attacking, and then we turn around and do that.
Listening to them. Okay, the question that someone presented you about Grown and Sexy, you represented yourself.
I did?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I'm just impressed with what you said. I didn't cancel it.
So, but what I want to say, this is my say, we have been trying to get development in crossings at sixty-four have been redlining for all these years. Been going to, with Alan Matthews, asking for franchises to come and locate. Brother near my Smith live over there near crossings at sixty-four. We have went, have gone from place to place begging private developers to come. Joyce Dickens have worked her fingers to the bone and could not get a grocery store. Now, someone coming out here saying they can get a grocery store? So I want to say that this council have always been trying to strive to get economic development at crossings at sixty-four. I have residents in Ward One that's been asking for economic development. We have one grocery store, one bank. We managed to get a roses and a piece of hut at the Edgecombe Chopping Center. So what I want to say, that this council have worked tirelessly trying to get economic development for the last fifteen years at crossings at sixty-four, but we've been redlining in that area.
I don't have three minutes, you do.
I am the mayor.
We'll act like the mayor.
Not, well, what I'm trying to do is fulfill this, also on that, we have a responsibility too. And I think that responsibility is to allow council members to speak, but again, I think what we need to do is also be mindful of the people that come up here. the people that come up here and speak their minds, and that's what we're doing. We're listening to them. And so at this point, I want to move on.
I have something I want to say. Does she want to continue? I, I have a problem, because I told you many months ago, I'm unintimidated, I'm not afraid. This is a good place, there's no problem with me about anybody's opinion. This is America, and we all get to have it. And that's a good thing. So, it's no problem with me, whatever you come down here and stay in this public square, that's your right. And it's also my right. You can't take away my rights just because you have them too.
Hmm, come on, man.
What I'm saying to you is, it's no problem with you speaking, but you're not speaking the truth. The truth is that what Mr. Knight just stated about Crossings at Sixty-four? You tell me if you can build a grocery store on one side of town, why can't you build it on the other side of town? Quality of what?
Traffic.
Traffic, and that's what the developers tell us when we go to places knocking on doors.
Not enough rooftops.
Not enough rooftops for certain types of folks living in the rooftops. That's coded language. If you want to know how we succeed, folks, it's because we all work together to lift up everyone. Now, if you have all of a sudden some influence to help develop properties in East Rocky Mountain, thank you for using your influence. I'm sure Ms. Dickens and everybody else who owns property is saying, "Help us out, come assist us." If this is what it took to get you to say, "I'll help you," then God bless Tarver Street Property. What I will say is this, is that if we're gonna build a sustainable economy, a sustainable equality, economy, means that everyone gets a shot at making money. And it's nothing wrong with people who are low-resourced to desire to get more resources. Nothing wrong with that. I thought that's what you wanted. I thought self-sufficiency was where we wanted to go to. There would not have been a Rocky Mountain Edgecombe CDC if there were thoughtful private developers in this city who said, "We will invest in every community and create affordable, quality development that everyone can live in." Because that does not exist, there has to be some way to get it done. And what I say is that when you look at the quality of housing that takes place in this city for people who are challenged in resources, we are a model, not something to be wondering why are we doing it. Other folk would love to do what we do. What we need for all of us to be able to do is understand how to lift up every component of this city. And if we get creative, maybe we'll have something else to talk about, other than what you don't like seeing done somewhere. Now, I laid out my reasons for why I support downtown development for everyone. Read the reasons if you want to know how I feel, you won't have to hear me preach it. But don't ask me to do what I've already done.
Gonna move on now to item seven. Item number seven is a public hearing. Again, you might come forward and speak on this. This is relative to an application to the local government permission for approval of installment purchase contract for the fiscal year 2019 construction projects. PNC Bank, National Association, there's one there, again, two-point-three-six percent for a fifty-nine-month term. There's another one, a million-two-forty for a fixed interest rate of two-point-nine-six. Several others that you can read there. They are for roof repairs for the senior citizen center, roof repairs for the traditional center, a gas main project, fire station improvements, and the recommended actions received public comment, adopt resolution, and three, authorize the finance director and/or city manager to execute any required documents to complete the financing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Knight. Any discussion? As a public hearing, does anybody want to speak on this? Sir, are you coming down to speak? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I have a question.
Okay.
So, and maybe this is for Amy. All of these projects were in CIP?
I can ask that question, sir.
Excuse me.
No problem. Yes, they, they were.
And there's no degradation of any of our DAP ratios or any of the metrics around our borrowing of these projects?
No, sir. We wouldn't recommend it.
Thank you. And I need to close the public hearing if no one's gonna speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Part of it, we have a motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Knight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. Item eight is a consideration of fiscal year 2019 installment financing. Again, this is Bank of America, Part of Capital Corporation. Again, you'll see a number of items there, articulating telescopic aerial license, non-overcentric aerial press, hydraulic bearing, cylinder equipment, most of it's all related to trenches, dump trucks, et cetera. There's a fire popper and a high-duty pump replacement. The recommended actions to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the installment financing contract and authorizing the manager and director finance to execute the documents required in connection with the financing. Any other motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bull, second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eight is approved. Item nine is a presentation from, I think, several people from the Rocky Mountain Wilson Airport Authority, Dionne, and then Gary Hodges, and Dan Herring.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Pro team, and gentlemen, and ladies of council, welcome. Staff, residents, and guests. We thank you for allowing the airport board to give you an update on the construction that began this past Monday morning at oh-seven-hundred. The airport was originally built fifty years ago and was in dire need. And I also would like to recognize Mr. Dan Herring, our secretary. Dan, stand up. He's been representing the airport board for quite some time, but thank you for being here. And at this point in time, I would like to introduce Mr. Dionne Venti. Dionne is well-established engineer with the Department of Transportation. He has contacts throughout the aviation community, the federal, state Department of Transportation, past airport manager in Elizabeth City, and he's a flight instructor, and he's brought back training for new pilots. And we are extremely blessed to have a man of his cal, his capabilities, being a part of our community. And he's gonna give you an in-depth presentation on what's going on, and thank you all for your contribution, and we're excited about what's going on. Mr. Venti?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, City Assistant, City Manager, and members of council. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for inviting me to make this briefing and share with you some information about the airport and your investment in our regional airport. I prepared a little PowerPoint presentation to assist me, but if I start to ramble on, feel free to cut me off. I really love talking about this airport and aviation generally, so without any further ado, I'd like to direct your attention right here. See if I can make this thing work. That's, that little picture right there is just a glimpse of what our customers see when they arrive at the airport. As you know, most of our corporate entities that are interested in economic development in the area are owned by aircraft, and we try to make a nice presentation for them when they get here at the gateway. So we plant a lot of flowers out there to make it appealing. But the real appealing part about this airport is the infrastructure, and we've made some, some measures to make sure that that infrastructure stays in place and this airport remains attractive for the aviation community in the area. Just a little bit of background about the airport. It was built after nineteen sixty-nine, fifty-year-old airport. It's, it's served, it's used for life as far as the infrastructure is concerned, and we're supporting many aircraft out there right now. We're averaging over eighty-two operations a day, which is about thirty thousand a year, which is pretty admirable for a general aviation airport. We've got twenty-five aircraft based out there right now officially, quadrupled that number. We employ five full-time, three full-time and two part-time employees out there. We are a Part 139 certified airport. Just a little bit more information, excuse me, can you tell, what, what is that? Part 139 airport means we are inspected by FAA or any places, just like any other commercial service airport. We just, as a matter of fact, we just had our annual inspection passed for flying colors, and they, they told us it was a number of Fuji airports. I'm very proud of the fact that we were successful in that endeavor this year. We're situated only for five hundred acres. We're a C-2 airport. That means we can, we can have large, fast aircraft come into our, into our community. We have aircraft rescue and firefighting facilities on field. If there is an emergency, we're able to respond. One of the things that we're testing on at our annual inspection is how fast we can respond when required to respond within three minutes. And we were able to do that within one minute this year. We set a record. We have a full parallel taxiway runway is over seven thousand feet long, which means we can bring in some of the fastest aircraft around. We can support over a hundred and forty thousand pounds to wheel aircraft, which means we can bring in as big as a seven forty-seven.
Have we ever had any, any crises needed to deploy high emergency personnel?
The biggest crises I've seen out there was a small brush fire off the end of runway. Contractors started, and we were able to respond within twenty minutes.
But no aviation-related?
None, none in the history of the airport.
What's the biggest type of aircraft that flies and has?
Currently now, we have a seven twenty-seven that comes in regularly for freight operations. Now, I've got a picture on here, I'll show you shortly. We do have a state-of-the-art weather system on the airfield. It's a multi-million dollar facility that the FAA maintains itself to the minute, weather, digital weather that's segregated out to the rest of the world. And that is a very fine thing to be up there. Some recent corporate and business operations that I thought you might be aware of. Cummings has been flying in and out of the airport with their employees and VIPs every week with their RJ-145. That happens to be our critical aircraft for the air, airfield that we design. Any improvements around this particular aircraft? That aircraft in the upper right-hand corner, those are, says in the citation, latitudes. Those are two of them. They're owned by BBNT, sometimes both of them arrive at the same time. Over there on the left, you see, those are Clayton Homes, is, they have Phenon Three-Hundreds, they have five of them, and they've flown all five of them in the airport. This is just a quick sample of what you see out there at the airport in the database. Here we have a snapshot of some of our freight operations that are happening monthly. FedEx, aluminum, UPS, IFO Group, and related charters all fly freight in and out of the air, airfield. A lot of times it's at night, they'll show up with their trucks and the fourth lift pallets of, for instance, Cummings turbine, turbine diesels on the aircraft and ship them all over the world. That aircraft down in the bottom-left corner, that's a seven twenty-seven, two-hundred right there is also one in the bottom-left corner. Quite a large aircraft. We also have some scheduled charter flights, Ronze over tours, and Hartsfield Aviation. We don't have commercial, scheduled commercial service activity at the airport. We do have charter flights. Those are forty passenger jets there that you see in that picture. Little bit of info on our recent North Carolina Economic Impact Report from the state. They just handed that out in January two thousand nineteen, over fifty-two billion in economic impact from aviation. Three hundred and seven jobs and twelve-point-six million in personal income, which equates to two-point-two million in state and local tax revenue. As far as Rocky Mountain is concerned though, we have contributed over almost seventy million in economic output last year. And four-hundred-and-fifty jobs out of the airport and twenty-five-point-nine million in personal income from workers in those jobs, which equates to two-point-nine million in state and local tax revenue. So, we just got this info from the state, and I'm trying to get it around and share it, but it's pretty amazing to make the economic impact from just this airport here.
Can you, can you talk a little about those jobs? That is quite impressive, sure, four-hundred. Can you just talk about how you create that count or how that's one of them?
It's, it's a, it's a calculation to do with direct and indirect economic input. And the jobs, what we did was, we surveyed all the companies that use the airport and which jobs are directly attributed to the operations in aviation through the airport. And we submitted that information to the state, that's what they use. So, about a third of the users responded, so it's probably triple. Yes, sir. KRWI is our call sign. We, we need business at the airport. We have a lot of things going on out there that you might not be aware of. There's a lot of aerial agriculture applications. We have air tours, business corporate use, disaster relief, drug reinforcement, flight destruction, transport human organs, transport paws, pets for paws. There's a lot of personal recreation there as well, and they do power line inspections out of there and traffic advisories, just to name some of the things that are going on. Here's a look at our last year's operating budget. We submitted a new operating budget this year. It's gone up a thousand percent mainly due to all the grants that we've received from the state and federal government recently. So I submitted the, the proposed budget to you last week and a copy of our last three budget years as well. We do have a transition plan in place through the airport authority to make the airport self-sufficient. We're currently in the phase three of that operation now. Getting close to seeing ourselves in the black. But we recently completed our strategic master plan. It's getting reviewed by the state and federal government now. We've lobbied Division Aviation and FAA for funding, and they have come through. We've implemented a terminal area redevelopment plan as part of our strategic master plan, and we, we started looking closely at friendly acquisition for our contiguous property along the airport road for future development. And we, we're, we'll be increasing operations two-fold in the next year because we're looking at increasing our fuel sales to low cost and high volume. Just a snapshot on our current and future projects at the airport. We recently completed a nine-hundred-thousand taxiway lighting and signage upgrade, which is required by the FAA as part of our annual inspections. We drafted an airport strategic master plan, that was worth three-hundred-thousand dollars that we received in state, state needs to airports. Three-hundred-and-forty-thousand awarded underground fuel farm mitigation project from the state, and we received a three-hundred-thousand-dollar award from the federal government for our cell-service fuel farm project. And two-point-one, one-hundred-percent funded T-hanger taxiway project, which just, just received our, our bid tab on last week. And we just received that fourteen-point-eight-fifty-dollar runway taxiway rehabilitation project, which, which the city council has graciously agreed to contribute local match towards. Future logistics connectivity, a lot of companies are interested in this airport because it's of a strategic location. Demographically, we're located right here, east of I-95, south of Sixty-four, north of Two-Sixty-Four, and it makes it very attractive for logistics. So it identifies a property south of the airport that's worthy of a feasibility study for an industrial park, for aviation, and possibly the railroads for office, etc. So the state has contacted us because it's So, the state has contacted us because it's part of our CIP and asked for more information about that, they'd like to fund that feasibility study. Our future T-hanger taxiway project will be underway next month. It's gonna accommodate twenty-three additional aircraft, that'll double our base aircraft with this one project. The approval of the bidder is a local company, PLT Construction for three point one million. And that project should be completed by November. Here's a glimpse of our future terminal area expansion proposal. Stage one can hangar another forty to fifty-five additional base aircraft. And stage two can hangar another fifty to sixty-five additional base aircraft. This is all property that is just east of the terminal area, or just northeast of the terminal area, between ninety-seven and airport property. Our fuel farm projects upgrade is underway, the design and permitting and bidding is underway. It consists of a twenty thousand gallon jet A, above-ground jet A fuel tank, which is much safer than the underground tanks that we have out there now. We did receive an award from the state to mitigate those and remove those and dispose of the property. They were built when the airport was built, nowadays everything is above ground and we can have secondary container. Design bidding is also underway for our self-serve fuel farm. There's a picture of a self-serve fuel farm similar to what we're gonna see at our airport. And that anticipated project starts in July. As far as our pavement rehabilitation project, it's underway, as Gary alluded to, they just started last week. They're full speed ahead on phase one. The runway is currently closed, so it's no tanned out, but it'll be back open again on July fourteenth. Ninety-day construction period for this phase one also includes the new apron improvements, so it will be fully operational in ninety days. It's a two hundred and fifty-day project, but we have this one particular phase to be completed in ninety days with two thousand dollar apron. Contractors already got three quarters of the runway built and they already have their pulverizer on site. Here's a look at the funding profile. As you can see, the low bidder was a Lega contractors out of Ohio. They're currently working on a project at RU now, so we have a lot of sustainability with their being so close. And we had a lot of confidence then because our consultants were working, currently working with them at RU at the time. The FAA contributed over six million dollars in portion of funding, that was one hundred percent of their portion of funding for the state for this year. So, we're very, very proud of that. The discretionary funding, the state offered up, the FAA gives them discretionary funding, they use it to their discretion, and the state offered three million for that. And then the state also put in another three point three million in their state needs airport. That's how much confidence they have in this project and confidence they feel is gonna contribute to more economic impact in this area. And then of course, the local match breakdown there, City of Rocky Mountain has contributed four hundred twenty-two thousand, which is one-seventh, two-sevenths of one ten percent. Joining arms in the other sponsors, the other four sponsors, Edge County County, Torrey, and City of Wilson, Wilson County and Nash County and Edge County County. So, it's a unified effort to make this project count and we're deeply appreciative for that.
So, one question. So, that's how much it costs to repaint?
That's right, we're actually rebuilding the entire runway and repainting the taxiway and then...
So, the feasibility study that we're in the process of obtaining, would talk about a second runway?
Actually, a second parallel taxiway.
Okay.
That could feed to it.
Okay. So, I bet you figured out, you know what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
The reference I have is sitting in a plane and looking at others coming down, so. So, I'm assuming that that's what you need. So, with the investment, the huge investment is being made, congratulations for having the confidence, the federal and the state government as well as ourselves. What are your anticipated return on that reference? Does that mean that would be helping us bring more traffic here?
The state estimates two hundred and eighty-one on the investment, funding return on investment on this project.
And that would be in terms of expanded capacity for the state industries who are helping us to pitch the airport to new industries looking and moving into our region?
Exactly. Companies like Corning, the first thing they do is fly into this airport, they park their vehicle, go straight to it.
I have a question. Do you ever envision, I know you said industrial use, basically what is being used for now? And as far as, do you envision it's ever having use for passengers, maybe trips from here to Charlotte?
I think it's just a matter of time, you know, a lot of the population is moving eastward from Raleigh down the sixty-four corridor. And I get more and more calls every day about passenger service here, and airlines are not blind to that. So, they do their calculations and once they decide that it's feasible for them to operate passenger service out of the airport, they contact us.
So, they do their research instead of us doing feasibility study on that, that's right. Okay, thank you.
And a question about the local match, how do you calculate that?
Ten percent of the project is required local match, we certify before they're awarded, make that award. So, by charter, by state charter, all five sponsors would have to contribute. One-sevenths for the counties and two-sevenths for the cities. So, that's how that's calculated.
How was that determined?
By the North Carolina legislature, after nineteen sixty-four, I believe. Thank you.
When this project was discussed in the Transportation and Budget Committee, it was my understanding from that, that each user, the airport, each one of the companies that flies planes in now, they would decide what alternate airport that worked best for them on this torn-up facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And with regard to those above-ground gas tanks, fueling stations, has flooding ever occurred on the airport property? And if so, to what depth of that?
Not to my knowledge, we're above a five-hundred-year floodplain, and so it just hasn't happened yet. Although, you know, this past couple winters have been very tough, but we have a really robust drainage system there and is able to shed off that storm there off pretty effectively.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. There's a, this is an overhead shot of a construction project as it looks today. It's hard to tell what's going on there, but there's a bunch of drainage pumps out there that they've laid out and there's some construction vehicles moving up and down. The contractor's basically taking over the whole airport. And we've given them free rein to get the job done for the ninety days, so that's why the airport's closed. There's their construction trailer, they've got the runner security checking in vehicles and equipment coming in. Here's a picture of the staging area where they store all their equipment out there. They've done a nice job of laying down all the mullings for their runway project to put all their equipment on. Here's a view of the milling machine and the convoy while they're tearing up the old runway. They grind off four inches off the asphalt and they load it up in those trucks and instead of hauling it away to the dump, we're reusing it at the airport for our perimeter, perimeter route around the fence line. There's a look at some of our drainage upgrades. All of the ditch crossings have been upgraded for this perimeter route, that's what the materials are looking like. Here's a view of the contractors demolition, the threshold bar. We're currently working with FAA on a three million dollar approach lighting system upgrade at the same time, so instead of paying for the same thing twice, we both contractors really sync up and do this job once. There's a picture of the pulverizing equipment that just arrived on site today. That thing will basically recycle the existing runway and build a new runway out of materials that are already there. And here is a picture of that asphalt plant that they're currently building on site, which is important because the asphalt that they put down will be a true hot mix. You won't have to truck it in.
It'll be back for you too. Is that year-round? I mean, can you explain that a little bit?
See, yeah, this asphalt plant, they own this asphalt plant and they move it from one project to the next. And that's how they're able to secure it a little bit. And we get a quality product. And I'll hear and answer further questions.
How do we rank against or beside, I mean, I shouldn't say against, but what's the difference between our airport and Greenville Airport?
Well, Greenville Airport's generally a hole in the swamps, so they're for...
They have passenger track.
They do, they have one airline passenger track down there. I have trained into their university and there's a hospital there, but it's not a far-fetched to visualize in the future where we would be competing with them.
So, we really have, we have a better position airfield. And it sounds like now state-of-the-art.
Yes, we're gonna be very attractive, especially in logistics and everything. But passenger service is probably not out of question in the future, has a greater status at first.
What is Greenville runway compared to?
I believe Greenville has a six thousand five hundred foot runway.
How much of the information you presented to us today will be on the airport website? I know the presentation will probably be on the city's website, but the citizens are just interested in the airport project in general. Do you have that on your website?
We have bits and pieces of it and anytime we get a request for information on the website, it's easy for us to go and connect it. Any other questions? Not, thank you for all you're doing out there, you're having a great time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item eleven, item ten down, this is consideration of minutes and recommendations on what they're scheduled to continue the whole meeting there. There's boards and conditions update, and again, there's still some appointments that we need to make. Two, Rocky Mountain Red Center update, Koshakhampton, I did that along with a new manager, Art Thompson. We have a closed session for several items there. And recommended actions to approve the minutes, approve the appointments. And three, adopt a resolution amending administrative policy entitled Central City Refinalization Panel adds one additional at-large member.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Miller, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is a consideration of tax releases and refunds, there's a Schedule A and a Schedule B. Recommended actions to acknowledge the receipt of the report from the city manager of Schedule A taxes, approve for release and a refund. And two, approve for release and a refund of taxes listed in Schedule B. So moved. Councilmember, by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Joyner, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is consideration of project ordinance appropriating funds in the public transportation fund, Tar River Transfer Station improvements. There's a federal transit administration grant, a local match, recommended action is to adopt the project ordinance.
So moved.
Sir.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Joyner, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item twelve is approved. Okay. Number thirteen, we are going to table this one for right now, I think we'll get an update on that, so we'll group on to item number fourteen. Consideration of the water assessment contract, this is for this pile and for water service at quarter two ninety-four, lessy, lessy trail. Recommended actions to approve the contract and authorize the man, city clerk, to execute the statement on behalf of the city. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Rogers, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item fourteen is approved. Item fifteen is a consideration of the task order number eight, this is a contract with Ellie Wood and Company. This is for engineering services, this is for screw pump replacements at Highway ninety-seven lift station. This is for design services, bidding, negotiating, construction contract. This is for replacement of two screw pumps, thirty-two thousand six hundred, do your motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Miller, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item fifteen is approved. Item sixteen is a consideration of property exchange with Lock Cabin Homes Limited. This is for property located on the east side of Middle Street and four-ten North Pearl Street for a city-owned property. It's located at twenty-three oh five Northwestland Boulevard through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and this is in connection with the Monk to Mill Trail project. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution of intent to exchange property and it authorizes the city clerk to advertise the property exchange pursuant to General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-one.
I have a concern in reference to the Monk to Mill Trail. And before we finalize this agreement, when we look at the Monk to Mill Trail, the investment that's planning to take place from the Rocky Mountain Mills up to the downtown area, I don't see that same investment from South Washington Street to the birthplace of the Delodius Monk. And I'm so afraid if we continue, if we complete the first phase and the second phase, which is the one that is really uplifting the great legendary Delodius Monk, and that would not be fully developed. If we're gonna honor Delodius Monk, then we need to honor him, not pimp him. And so, I would like to see that second phase and how land acquisition and the amount of money is gonna be put to use to make sure that that second phase from South Washington Street to around, to the part around the Y is included. And to me, if we put all the money in the first phase, then I think we're defeating the name of it from Monk to Mill. It's really from the Mill to downtown.
Could I ask Brad to come up and maybe clarify some of that?
I spoke to Brad.
Okay.
And as he's coming up, I just wanna make sure that council is aware that this is the final action. This is just an action to require the clerk to advertise the intent. And so, that being said, I think we can come back to the city council, I think committed the whole meeting to address the issues that you have just raised.
With one committed hall, I asked if I would get with staff and your assistant managers to walk that trail to make sure that monies are put in that portion that leads to the Delodius Monk birthplace. I don't wanna see millions of dollars put in from the Mill up until downtown and very little put in the second phase. So, we're gonna pimp Monk, just name it for Monk to downtown. Well, I want to see some money on the east side leading to the birthplace of Delodius Monk. Thank you.
If you have any questions for Brad? I think the east side is more an urban trail than...
It is, and just for clarification, it is all over one project, we did the intent, so it gets from the way and it gets out.
And I'm, you know, I made my position clear from that one, is that I feel that I'm good with our plans, but I'm not good with where they end. And even the comments just made, second phase is just an update, that's a problem to me. That we have lessened expectations of part two of what should be happening. I thought that the whole point was to create economic impact from one end to the other. That's what I thought. And what I also know, money does not occur if there's no project that's been identified and no clear pathway to a vision that's been outlined. And so, I am not in opposition to this, but what I will say is I'm not excited about it either. Because I don't see the full forethought given to the downtown to Monk portion. And this is not one thing that you are having here for the first time, we've been talking about this for years. It's not just been with this last issue, it's been years. It's not just been with this last issue, it's been years. So, what I'm asking is that our staff, our team internally, give a dedicated look at what our expectation is with vision from downtown all the way to the Monk birthplace. You have meetings with our community. I like to see what some plans are that have significant financial investment as well. Not just widening some sidewalks and putting up some wave higher signs. But something to motivate people to walk down the street, open up a business. You know, have places where people gather and are able to be employed as well. We don't see, I don't see the second half of downtown to Monk working if it's all tourism-based with nowhere to spend your money. Makes sense?
Yeah.
So, that's what, that's what we're asking.
So, I guess the question tonight is to be adopt the resolution of intent to exchange the property, knowing that it's going to come back.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
I have, I have one comment. I have this article where Rocky Mountain competition for a Delodius Monk Culture Center. But it's going to have to be a drawing card on that South Washington side to get people to get to the Monk birthplace. And I'm in favor of it now, but I am opposed of it. We're using the demographics of the distressed neighborhood around the Y for the grant application and not putting any help with the optics of the project to improve that section of the, of the trail. So, I would like to get with staff so we can actually walk that trail and see where it's going to actually end and what we can do to encourage development on, on that second phase as well.
So moved. There's nothing else before the council, we need to go into a closed session.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Motion, second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Sorry about that. We, thank you for being at our meeting. We're going to go into a closed session. I need a motion. For personnel issue. At a time, attorney of the privilege.